Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the rescheduled council work session meeting and regular council meetings, City of Gulf Shores, January the 25th. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Councilman Steve Jones to lead us with the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you all join me in thanks, please? Father God, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Have us be good students of the facts we must weigh that affect each and every decision. Have us hear every issue with fairness and discernment. In the wake of the recent national elections and the fallow that has ensued, help us find peace and calm in the knowledge that we cannot change that so far above us, but that we can make decisions and make a difference in our local community for those that we have been placed to hear and serve. We ask for your protection around those that work to protect us from harm and serve us in times of emergency, both here and away. Father, our city, our county, our state, and our nation face medical chaos, and so we pray for calmness and swift delivery of healing medicines to those most in need. We pray for peace. We pray for healing. We pray for honesty and fair dealing at every level of government. On a personal note, we lift up our brother and neighbor Herb Malone, who needs your hand of favor upon his healing. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. It is in your son's name we ask and all things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, on one God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
One, will you call a rule, please?
Mr. Garris?
Here.
Mr. Sinek?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Dr. Dyken?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Here.
Mayor Craig?
Here. As we begin the meeting this evening, as I mentioned, it's a cow and council meeting, so every item that we have that we're going to be discussing, we will first have a committee of the whole type meeting where we'll be introducing the subject and we'll be asking for your input. And after that input is received, we will take that into consideration and then we'll vote on that item and then we'll go to the next one. So we're combining the two meetings together for those of y'all that are used to being here. To begin with that, I'm going to, we've got two, one session of minutes to approve this evening. It's the regular council meetings of January the 11th.
Motion to accept January 11th, 2021 regular council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve these minutes as presented. Any discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention duly noted, Mr. Sinek. The next item on the agenda is the approval of expense vouchers in the amount of $9,775,063.48. With that number being that large, I've asked Cindy to go over those for us in detail.
I have just a brief PowerPoint presentation of the January expense vouchers. They were $9.775 million and only $976,000 of that was regular operating. The inner-city transfers totaled $2 million. Break down the $9.775. The three expense groups outside of the regular operating were $8.8 million with certificates of deposit at $5 million. So we invested $5 million of the general fund money in CDs at about 0.5% interest rate, so that will yield $25,000 this year. The other two groups are capital/transportation and grant reimbursable items. In the capital transportation, we had $918,000 for city school improvements, $609,000 for improvements for the medical facility, and then Waterway East at $51,000, and some land and improvements, $31,000, and retainage payable, that's what we hold back to pay to contractors when work is done, $75,000, and Coastal Gateway Boulevard at work at $825,000, along with transportation improvements of almost $99,000, and Beach Walking District at $247,000, for a total on those projects of $2.858 million. And the other item are grant reimbursable items. Hurricane Sally, $629,000. Ecotourism expenses of $65,000. Adeka Little Lagoon expenses of almost $37,000. Rec Trail Fort Morgan, $96,000. Bill grant improvements of almost $20,000. And then the buildings, for Oyster Bay Fire Station, that's improvements on the building, $23,400, and that's the planning stage, I think, right now. And then the transfer of the debt service fund, again, that was for the Oyster Bay Fire Station, final payment of $70,000. So those totaled $940,000. So when you include all three, that came back to the $8.8 million and along with the regular operating expenses of nine, almost a million dollars, then that came back to the $9,975,000. Our inner-city transfers totaled $2 million, and that was a loan from the general fund that will be repaid when we have bond funds that mature. There are some investments that we were able to do in CDs at a very good rate a couple of years ago, and those will mature at the end of March. It was at, those rates were almost at 1.75% interest, if I recall correctly. So we loaned the money to the bond fund for the transportation projects until the work can be, well, until the CDs can mature at the end of March. And with that, I'll answer any questions if you have any. Just wanted to explain why those numbers were so large.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Is that a motion to approve and accept these, this report?
Move to approve the expense vouchers as stated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the expense vouchers as presented. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those expense vouchers are approved. Thank you, Cindy. The next item is, we have a couple of presentations, the first of which is the Arbor Day Proclamation 2021. Mark?
Yes, sir. Jacob, may I pull up my presentation? Thank you. Tonight, we'd like to, I'll have two, two presentations. The first one, first part of the evening is for the Arbor Day 2021 proclamation. Would like to have the beautification board members that are present to, if they would come forward, and I'll present them with this proclamation. Part of our beautification board members that throughout the year work on projects to help enhance the beautification of the City of Gulf Shores, but their, their primary project, their biggest project every year is we, we give away on magnitude of 600 to 700 trees to the community, and this year it's even more important with all the vegetation that we lost due to Hurricane Sally. But our board members are Mary Wayne Gilmore, who's our chairman, Rodney Powell, who's our court chairman, both there present tonight, Brooke Taylor, who's our correspondent secretary, Matt Lumpkin, our publicity chairman, Linda Bender is present, and Marlene John, who's present as well, David Mayfield, and Perez Eddie Bowers, our newest member. With that, I'd like to read the proclamation. From the Office of the Mayor of Gulf Shores, Alabama, Arbor Day 2021. Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our, for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas the City of Gulf Shores has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, and now therefore, on behalf of Robert Kraft, Mayor of Gulf Shores, Alabama, along with the City Council of Gulf Shores, Alabama, we do hereby proclaim Saturday, February, February the 27th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Gulf Shores, and I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Signed, Robert Kraft, Mayor of Gulf Shores. So, to give you guys a little background on what we're doing this year for Arbor Day, obviously with COVID-19, we had to make some changes to our normal Arbor Day celebration, which is normally held in this building and out in our courtyard area. The date will be Saturday, February the 27th. Will be from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. This year, we're going to locate it at the Gulf Shores Elementary School, located at 1600 East Third Street in Gulf Shores, Alabama. We're going to utilize their school drop-off location to do a drive-through Arbor Day giveaway. So this year, we'll have some flyers that'll show you what trees are available to select. We'll get that information from the drivers up front, and then as they drive through, we'll place those trees in their vehicle for them as they go through to minimize contact with other individuals. As always with all of our Arbor Day celebrations, you must be a resident of Gulf Shores and have a valid Alabama driver's license with a Gulf Shores address to participate in Arbor Day. We'll have 600 trees to give away. There'll be six species. Each driver will get four trees. And so, let me go back. That's it. If there's any questions, not, I'll see you in a few minutes.
Thank you, Mark. Next on the agenda is Gulf Shores Fire Rescue Chief Mark Sealy with some presentations.
Good afternoon. When I took over here, one of the things that kept me up and still keeps me up at night is firefighting high-rise construction, safety and well-being of our fire fighting. So one of the immediate needs was to train at some of these facilities. I had Fire Marshal George Sury reach out, and he reached out to St. Carlos, and many of them. Landy House and Ruth Daley, instrumental in helping us get some training done down there. And I want to take this time to thank them, because not only did they open up their facility to us, they had lunch waiting at the fire station when we came back. I mean, who does that? I mean, that's only Gulf Shores, St. Carlos. So Dan and Ruth, would you come forward, please? We really appreciate you letting us do that. That made us better, and we'll continue to probably ask you to answer. Thanks a lot.
The next thing I want to do is, is, is present a life-saving award to some of our crews. If you guys will come forward. On January the 9th, our crews responded to a cardiac arrest at Lululew's, and we do that quite often. And so what, but the one thing that I think is remarkable about, about this one is we resuscitated a human life, which we do often, but this is one of the first using a, a new piece of equipment called a Lucas device. That Lucas device you're looking at was approved by the city council and mayor, so this is a team effort, and, and we appreciate you getting us the, the equipment that we need to be able to do our job and save our citizens. They responded to a person that was pulseless and apical. They were cardiac arrest, their heart was not beating. They, what this device does, it does automated CPR, and it does very effective CPR that we can't sustain ourselves. It does such a good job of doing CPR, you can actually feel a pulse on a person when this thing's working. And so the, that this thing really increases our chances of, of getting somebody back. So I want to recognize these crews. First of all, Battalion Chief Bo Smith. Lieutenant Robert Garris. Firefighter Paramedic Horster Keller. Firefighter Paramedic Micah Smith. Firefighter Justin Jobs, Dobbs is not here tonight, and then Firefighter Scout Alexander. Thank you for the job you do every day. I'm very proud to be chief and be a part of your department. Finally, I want to recognize two individuals that have had a recent promotion. And again, thanks to the city council administration for allowing me to set up the structure the way I'd like to set it up. And we split the assistant chief role into two roles, and I'll tell you a little bit of why. Going from one deputy chief to two, two assistant chiefs, one is the chief of operations, and that chief of operations over not only the day-to-day operation of the truck and making sure that we're on the same page from shift to shift, because we work shift work, we're not always there together, but also over all of our training, which we have a, a, a big need, and that's a big job as well, and then over the EMS, training and paperwork and all of those things. So the chief of operations would be Robert Rowland. Robert, come forward, please. And the other position is the chief of staff, and that chief of staff is over everything else. So if you start thinking about what is that, those things include the, the budget, logistics, health and safety, planning, beach safety, beach rescue, ISO, as well as the Fire Marshal's office, all the fire investigation, pre-fire planning and all of that thing. So big jobs for both, and that's going to be Melvin Shepherd. I'm going to quickly introduce them. We'll have a promotional ceremony in the near future, and we'll announce that at that time. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Get into our regular business, and we'll start with, we've got two public hearings this evening, the first of which is on an ordinance that is a rezoning request for Rayleigh Farms. Lee, will you lead us through that? And this is where we'll be listening to your comments before we have any discussion or take any action as a council.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This is a public hearing item. This is Rayleigh Farms rezoning. This is a request to rezone 162 acres from conditional residential high-density single-family R1-5 to residential high-density single-family R1-5, and to modify specific conditions of the current zoning. This was rezoned back in 2018 with what we, we commonly refer to as the old R1-5, so it's being, and there were some conditions associated with that rezoning that are being requested to be amended, along with the rezoning to the new R1-5. This is a location map here. The map, skip ahead. Yeah, thank you. It's a little delayed. The map on the left with the red star shows the property and the overall scheme of the City of Gulf Shores. It's in the northeast portion of the community. The map on the right shows the, the property, the 162 acres outlined in black and highlighted in yellow. It's located along Coastal Gateway Boulevard, about midway between State Highway 59 and the Foley Beach Express. There are a few timelines associated with this presentation, just to, to walk you through. This is annexed about four years ago, and it's been under some form of the development process since that time, so there's a lot of history here over the past four years. September 10th, 2018, the property was zoned from agricultural to R1-5, as I mentioned earlier, and this was really the model for the new R1-5. This was right before the new R1-5 was adopted to increase the lot sizes from 6,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet, and the, the lot widths from 50 feet to 60 feet. So this rezoning, the conditions associated with this rezoning, all the lots were larger than 8,000 square feet and a minimum of 60 feet wide, so they far exceeded the old R1-5 in place at the time. March 26th, 2019, the preliminary plat for Phase 1, it's about 30 acres of the overall 162 acres. That preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Commission. On October 20th of, of last year, the Planning Commission adopted the major street plan. The major street plan, it has a lot of analysis associated with our existing roadway infrastructure and its deficiencies, and it identifies 22 projects to address existing traffic congestion, mitigate anticipated future year capacity deficiencies, improve mobility, and increase safety. That's the, the recommended improvements in the, the map to the right. All of the, the roads that are shown with a blue line are existing roadways and have, have projects identified for their improvement in the next 20 years. The yellow dash lines are either extensions of existing roads or new roadways that have projects associated with them to be completed within the next 20 years, which is the planning horizon for the major street plan. So project number two, which is outlined in red there, is the, the, the project on the major street plan that impacts this 162-acre piece of property. Project number two is identified as the east-north-south connector. This roadway is planned to connect James Road and Foley down to Oak Road East by the zoo, and you can see this property is highlighted in the pink color, and the, the alignment is shown as a dash line going kind of through the middle of the property, and you can see it extending north and south from there. The major street plan is, is really just a broad brush stroke as far as these planned roadways are concerned. It's intended to be a, a guide for future roadways, as well as a signal for planning staff and the Planning Commission and the council on working with developers as they develop their property to, to then identify the, the actual alignment of these roadways through the property as they develop, or to identify the alignments for us to purchase rights of way in order to construct these roadways. This is just a two-lane roadway. It's intended to relieve Alabama State Highway 59 of some local traffic. So highlighted there in yellow is Phase 2 of Rayleigh Farms subdivision. You can see Phase 1 that is currently under construction, kind of ghosted out there to the west, and the, the red line is the alignment of the north-south connector on the major street plan. The blue dots are the alignment based on the major and collector street plan, and then there's a green line there to the east, which was proposed by the applicant. You can see the yellow highlighted subdivision plat that was submitted does not accommodate the major street plan alignment as proposed by the plan. So on October 29th, the Planning Commission deferred this Phase 2 subdivision plat and, and asked staff to work with the applicant in order to nail down this alignment as part of their, their subdivision. Through the month of November, we worked with the applicant to identify a, an alignment that would work for that development, as well as for accommodating the, the right-of-way for this future roadway. This is the applicant's revised concept, and you can see there along the eastern property line, the, the location identified by the, the red line is the 80-foot right-of-way. That's a proposed dedication along the eastern property line, but in giving up this, it amounts to about five acres of land, and the applicant has lost considerable lots based on their existing zoning by providing that right-of-way. So they've asked, they submitted an application to rezone the property in order to remove some of the conditions that would prohibit them from reaching their lot yield of three units per acre overall, and that's what's before you today. Before Planning Commission, we looked at that right-of-way and the impacts that it would have on the Stonegate subdivision to the east, and that red line is, is along the property line between Rayleigh Farms and Stonegate. So this is standing on Coastal Gateway, looking northward along that property line. You can see Stonegate House there to the right and a Rayleigh Farms house there to the left with a shared property line. If this right-of-way were to be designated within the Rayleigh Farms development in the heart of it, as is shown on the major street plan, that upper cross-section is what would happen. The, the southern cross-section there labeled Connector Road is under the alignment of the 80-foot right-of-way along that property line. And with the 80 feet and it just being a two, two-lane travelway, we wanted to look at what could be done there in order to mitigate the impacts of this Connector Road on the existing Stonegate subdivision. So you can see with the 80 feet, there's a proposed 40-foot landscape buffer. There's a lot of native vegetation there, but there's, in the next slides, there's a proposal for additional landscaping that would be installed there, but you can see both in section and in plan, a 40-foot landscape buffer, two 11-foot travel lanes, a planning strip with street trees, and then a multi-use trail that is called for along the length of this north-south connector. So on December 15th, 2020, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning application. They did ask staff to provide some more detailed recommendations to council on that landscape buffer, because there were folks from Stonegate that attended that meeting and had questions about the details of that landscape buffer. These details aren't part of this rezoning. You'll see when we get to the conditions, the rezoning is really, the conditions are related to the dedication of the right-of-way for the 80-foot roadway, and a lot of these details are just what we want to propose as we move forward with the dedication of the right-of-way and construction at a future date. So recommended buffer planning, you can see down the table are requirements by buffer class. The zoning ordinance has landscape buffers that are required. The intent is to buffer incompatible land uses primarily. So if you have an industrial use and a single family next to one another, the industrial use has to provide a buffer. So that 40 feet is So that 40 feet is the widest buffer that we have even without a fence. In this case, we're recommending an eight-foot fence similar to the fence that is being constructed right now on Coastal Gateway. So it'd be a logical extension of that fence that's there today. Two types of trees, both medium and large trees. You can see 100-foot, they're done by 100 lineal feet, and that red box indicates 100 lineal feet of planting. So these would supplement the plants that are there today with a row of large trees as well as a double row of medium trees as well as some native shrub vegetation in order to buffer those lots. So bear with me here. These are the 10 conditions of the current zoning that's in place in Rayleigh Farms today. Everything in red is proposed by the applicant to remain. Everything in black or crossed out is proposed to be removed. So the 162-acre site shall not exceed a density of three dwelling units per acre. There's no change in density. That condition is remaining. The blue crossed-out condition, number two, the minimum lot size shall be 60 by 140 and 70 by 140. That's the real condition that they'd like to remove because it's hampering their ability to get to the density of three units per acre. But they are keeping larger lots shall be placed adjacent to Stonegate subdivision and shall include a minimum lot width of 70 feet. So all the lots that back up to the 80-foot right-of-way would still be a minimum of 70 feet wide and would be the largest lots within the subdivision. Number three would be removed. Subdivision amenities shall include but not be limited to clubhouse, pool, lakes, and parks. The clubhouse is in, the pool is in, walkways are in for Phase 1, and they'll continue to provide those walkways and amenities around the park as new phases come in. Number four, the dedication of 10 feet of land adjacent to Coastal Gateway Boulevard. That has already been dedicated and has been used for the improvements along Coastal Gateway. So there's no reason to have that condition anymore. Number five, a maximum of two ingress egress drives for the property are allowed, which shall be located at the intersection of the future roadway to Trailside. Trailside no longer exists. It expired. And at the existing intersection of Osprey Landing, that's where their Phase 1 access is today. This new 80-foot right-of-way will provide the second means of access to the property. So there's no need for item number five. Number six, no connection shall be provided to the parcel directly north of the subject property, which lies within the city of Foley, the Coastal Gateway Boulevard, until a street within Foley is connected to. And that's the whole goal of this connector roadway, is to connect to an existing street in Foley. So there's no need for that condition. Number seven, the applicant shall construct right-turn lanes from Coastal Gateway Boulevard. That was put in place when Coastal Gateway was a two-lane roadway. Today, it's a four-lane roadway, so there is a lane to go around. There's no need for additional right-turn lanes. Number eight, a minimum eight-foot privacy fence shall be constructed along the east property line. That property line is shifting with the new right-of-way. The subdivision regulations do require a minimum six-foot tall fence with masonry columns every 50 feet. You're seeing they're constructing them right now along Coastal Gateway Boulevard. So a similar fence construction will be required along the 80-foot right-of-way when they develop that phase. Number nine, this is staying. The future subdivision on the subject property shall adopt covenants and restrictions to regulate common areas similar to those in Stonegate. They submitted similar covenants and restrictions in Phase 1. This condition will stay, so they'll continue to submit those covenants and restrictions for each phase of development. Number 10 will remain. Trees located along the west property line shall be preserved in accordance with the tree preservation ordinance. So the four items that remain, as well as these three are new, and these are associated with the dedication of 80-foot right-of-way. Number one, the applicant shall dedicate a minimum 80-foot right-of-way as depicted on the applicant's conceptual master plan, which is there to the right, prior to or in conjunction with the submitted preliminary subdivision plat for the second phase of development, which you can see down there to the southwest area along Coastal Gateway Boulevard. So they'll need to dedicate that 80 feet of right-of-way at that time. Number two, the city will construct the north-south connector road to the proposed eastern entrance where that star is, as depicted on the master plan, prior to the completion of construction of the third phase of development. The applicant tells us that that's about a two- or three-year process. So we'll be looking at the city constructing to that entrance prior to the completion of Phase 3. Number three, the developer will design and construct an emergency access at the location of the proposed north-south connector. It will serve as the Rayleigh Farms secondary access. The fire code requires two accesses for a subdivision of this size, so they're going to construct a temporary emergency access for fire and safety, and that lot will be developed once the new connector road is opened up and provides that second access to the development. So in summary, these are the seven conditions that will apply. Staff is recommending that these conditions shall apply to the rezoning. Number one, the 162-acre site shall not exceed three units per acre. Larger lots shall be placed adjacent to Stonegate and shall include a minimum lot width of 70 feet. Those are the lots that back up to the 80-foot right-of-way. Future subdivisions shall adopt covenants and restrictions similar to Stonegate. Number four, trees located on the west property line shall be preserved according to the tree protection ordinance. Number five, the applicant shall dedicate the 80-foot right-of-way as depicted on the conceptual master plan, prior to or in conjunction with the preliminary plat for the second phase. Number six, the city will construct the north-south connector to the proposed eastern entrance prior to the completion of construction of the third phase. And finally, the developer will design and construct an emergency access at the location of the north-south connector road intersection with Coastal Gateway Boulevard. It will serve as a secondary access until the eastern connection is made. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Lee, thank you. Council, you have questions?
Lee, I have one. The 80-foot right-of-way shows construction of a walking path and the traffic paved road area with street trees on either side, a ditch, and then a vegetative area between that and Stonegate. Can the hard construction, the drainage, the roadway, and all that be built without destroying whatever buffer is there to back to the east of that land, which is backing up to the property on Stonegate, which has some pretty nice-looking vegetation in there? Can that be protected without tearing that up during the construction process?
Yeah. Mark Ackerman, the city engineer, may answer that better, but I think the fact that there's no subgrade infrastructure on the eastern side, that we're just going with the swale, it could likely be graded and paved, so that 40 feet would have a really good opportunity of staying as it is today.
I looked at that when I ride by there, and it looks to be something existing, and whatever we plant won't be as thick as that would be. So I think that would be an important consideration if we can do that. And Mark, do you agree that that is something we might can accomplish there?
Absolutely. We would greatly prefer to use existing vegetation that's already healthy and well-established and then supplement that with whether additional landscaping we would need to do to fill in gaps that may naturally occur. Then we'll still have the eight-foot privacy fence on the east side of that, that we would minimize the impact to construct that, to get that buffer in, as well as the natural landscaping that's already there today.
Thank you, Mark. One other question, Lee, for you. In the, we're going to be building a road to that entrance north. Once you come off of Coastal Gateway, there's a star where we're going to be building the road to. You show the road extended beyond that. What's the status of that? That would be bringing Foley traffic down through that road. Where are we with that portion of this road?
That would be, and Mark, the city engineer, has talked with the city of Foley. The good thing, Skipper Consulting, the transportation consultant that developed our major street plan, is also working with the city of Foley, and we're in conversations with their city engineer about also working with us to get that connection made because it's mutually beneficial to both the city of Foley as well as Gulf Shores. But they've been very interested in extending County Road 10. You can see on the major street plan, there's a gray line that shows County Road 10 coming from 59 over to the Foley Beach Express. So this is a roadway that they're also very interested in, and we're going to stay in touch with them and continue to make strides to make this connection happen to the north.
I only ask that because of the potential of increased traffic on that road that, you know, with two lanes on 80-foot right-of-way connecting to Foley may be somewhat of a concern. I didn't know if that was an agreement that's already been made, that road has to be built, or is that something to be determined?
Within the city of Foley?
Within, we're extending beyond the star. So we connect that to other traffic coming in. Is that a requirement of this plan?
Yeah, beyond the star, that right-of-way would be part of their dedication to the city in order to extend it to the city limits on the northern property line.
But it'll be us to decide when to construct it, if at all.
That's exactly right. The right-of-way will be there as part of this development, but north of the star will be up to the city to determine when that is actually constructed.
And I think that's an important element of this because if the traffic is manageable from us and whatever is used by Rayleigh Farms in the surrounding area of Rayleigh Farms, that's one thing. Opening up to Foley as a thoroughfare may be something beyond what we would be wanting to do, but we don't have a commitment to do that. That is something that we will have the option to do if we believe that this will be beneficial and that this road will support it.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. That's the only questions that I have. Counsel, anybody else? This is part of the public hearing, folks, where I know we've got a lot of folks in the audience that want to have a comment on this. One at a time, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and tell us what's on your mind.
First of all, I want to thank all of y'all. The election was great, got to vote for you, and we really appreciate you serving our city. I'm Janine Coker, and my home backs up to the property line of what we call our tree row, which has been a little clarified, but from what he just said, it sort of contradicts himself that there could still be a fence on our property line, which is going to take that natural tree row away. And we want to guarantee that it's going to be left. And I thank the people so much from the Arbor Day because we get our trees from Arbor Day for Stonegate because we don't have many. But these trees have been there for, I don't know how long, but a long, long time. We don't want to see any of them destroyed. But number one, just in my backyard, and I gave pictures of my backyard for you to see and forgive it because the hurricane did a little bit of damage. We don't have near the greenery. These are natural euphon trees to Alabama. They're also a natural environment for the migrating birds, the local birds, because these trees have evidently the best-tasting berries for birds you've ever seen, and they love them. And we love having the birds there.
Can I interrupt you just for a second? Steve, that's what I gave you. Will you pass those around?
Philip's got them.
They're already here.
I'm sorry.
They got to me, and I didn't see them, but I've looked at them.
That's okay.
That's what she's referencing there, and it...
That's my backyard.
Picture's worth a thousand words. So I'm sorry for interrupting. I just want everybody to see that.
No, sir, I appreciate it. Anything that you see, let me know. That is one main concern because what a sad situation it would be if I have 100 trees on my backyard, my next-door neighbor does, the other next-door neighbor does, and you can see from them, they're umbrella trees. 4:30 in the afternoon, my house faces the west, my whole backyard is shady because we have small garden lots. And another thing that I just wanted that you be aware of what is there, and I'm sure you're welcome to come walk in my backyard. I don't have a fence, and see it if you want to. But another thing that concerns me and all the others is we sit in our backyard every afternoon, even in the winter, but mainly in the summer when it's 90-something degrees because of these trees, we can enjoy our backyard. But I'm going to be sitting on that property line because there's not about 10 feet from where I sit to the Rayleigh's property, and I'm going to have a road in my backyard. I already have one 10 feet in my front yard. And the concern is about this buffer fence and everything. I mean, how are we going to enjoy what Mr. Rayleigh put in our Stonegate covenants because he was the developer of Stonegate, and we appreciate that. And you're going to be hearing traffic, you're going to be hearing everything if there is a road that close to our property. I don't think anyone on the council are here, or Mr. Rayleigh, would want a road right in his backyard. And then after looking at the other plat of the red one coming down, I can't imagine any subdivision having a road that's going to go all the way through their subdivision to the zoo. You're going to be dumping so many cars on County Road 8. It's just going, it sort of blows my mind when I heard that, and I certainly hope the council will consider that also. But mainly the roads so close to us because I know they're going to end up tearing some of the natural trees down that have been built. But other than that, we're concerned about where the fence will go, and we're certainly concerned about other things with the tree and the environment of the property that's behind us, too. So I hope you will take it into consideration. We love Gulf Shores, we support Gulf Shores, and we hope that Gulf Shores can be fair to us in this development, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Ma'am, I have a question for you. Your backyard...
That's my backyard, that picture.
Yeah, I saw those. In other words, how far is it from your house to your back, to the west property line?
My property line to where that tree row is, maybe 10 feet.
So your house is 10 foot from your...
No, my backyard, I'm sorry.
How far is your house from the west property line?
It had to be 40 feet with a 10-foot burial.
Okay.
Or right-of-way, I should say, not burial. It has to have a 10-foot right-of-way. So I have about 10 feet from where I sit in my backyard to the property line.
It's 10 foot where she sits every day.
Okay, I got you.
Sort of where the brick are in that area. It's more like the property line because the trees are actually on the Rayleigh property.
Now, Mark, what were you saying about that, all that shrubbery that, you know, borders the north-south property, which is the west property line, but it runs north and south? Is most of that going to be able to stay? Because there's 40 foot, another 40 foot before the road stars.
Yes, that's the intent because if the lots back up to, if developed as it was originally approved, the lots would back up to their property line. So all those trees would actually be removed if a house built next to them. So if they had a house in their, you know, if they looked across to the west on the other side of the fence, and there was a house there as it was originally proposed, there would be no trees left because they would clear their lots, just like the lots were cleared on Stonegate when they went in to develop those lots. So they would lose that vegetation if it developed with houses abutting other houses. So what we're proposing is that this 80-foot right-of-way, the eastern half of that right-of-way be preserved as natural vegetation, and only the western half of that right-of-way have the road constructed in it.
Okay. And where would the fence go, Mark?
Well, the fence was put in as we thought was a response from the Planning Commission meeting where they wanted some type of fence or other buffer. That was a direct response to the people that had attended that meeting. So again, the fence being put in was, we thought, at the request of Stonegate. So if they prefer not to have that fence there, that's going to be, that'd be up for discussion.
Could the fence be put further to the west so that it's not dividing the property line of Stonegate from the 40-foot buffer, but put it on the far west of the 40-foot buffer? So it'd be a road, a fence, 40-foot vegetative buffer retaining most of the vegetation that's on the west part of Stonegate.
I wouldn't have a problem with that. I'd defer that to Lee. I don't think he would either.
Yes, it can because that's the city's 80-foot right-of-way. So we will bring you those plans, and you can show that detail, and we can do it just like you're suggesting.
Yeah, I was trying to preserve all those, the natural woods there that you guys have already, and that's just a good idea what Jason had.
Does that make sense, ma'am?
It makes more sense that the fence be closer to the road, but the road is still going to be very close to our property. The council in the past has given a lot of barriers to other subdivisions. Amherst Walk, you gave 100 feet. Now you're giving us 30 or 40, I think. I think it changed to 40 today. or forty, I think. I think it changed to forty today. And then there's a road. And so we don't want to see, and I don't think that you would either, folks from Foley cutting through and continuously going down our backyards, because thirty feet is still sort of like a backyard, in a way.
There's forty foot from your house to the property line, and then there'll probably be another thirty of woods there before the fence was put up. So there'd be probably seventy feet from your house to that fence. Am I reading that correct?
If that's true, that's a lot better.
Yeah, that's what Jason just, yeah, Jason just mentioned that, closer to eighty feet, yeah. And those woods could be preserved, and the fence would be on the west side of the natural shrubbery that's there now.
And if you build a fence, then the contractors can't really get over onto your property without tearing up the fence they just built.
Exactly.
So I think there is a better option there to preserve the existing vegetation and create a fence between you and the traffic, which will give some sound barrier and won't be right in your backyard, because there will be a drainage swale beyond the fence, and then there will be the road with some landscaping around the road. Then on the other side, it'll be a multi-use trail. So I believe there's a way to do this and protect the Stonegate subdivision in the best way possible. Mark, you think all of that is achievable?
Absolutely. We fed a road in a lot more narrow spot than that before. So again, this is an at-grade two-lane highway that's being long-term planning. This is something we're looking forward to over the next forty years. This is, you know, part of our forty-year outlook. Now, it's pretty high up on that list, and the intent is for locals to use this street as an alternate to fifty-nine or to the Beach Express. So for the folks that live on Coastal Gateway, not just folks fully coming into town, but folks that live on Coastal Gateway that want to go north or go south and not have to fight the traffic in the summertime on the Beach Express on Highway fifty-nine, to give them a local street that they could use. And that's the intent, is to try to give more options to our locals as opposed to having to rely solely on state highways or privately maintain roadway systems.
And I think that one other point that I was trying to make earlier is from that star, it's where the road ends, and that does not connect to Foley. And it does, and they cannot connect to it unless we allow that road to be built further up.
Yes, sir.
And that's where, it won't, it's not something that we're, what we're saying tonight is we're building that star and stopping. And for it to be extended forward, there's going to have to be a decision to do that. And I think that till we see how much traffic this thing's going to generate, and then we try to understand why are we connecting to Foley, and what do we expect to be on there then, that road is not connecting to Foley now. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Thank you.
And that, I think, is the right way for us to do this, because we don't know what's going to be on that road just internally driven, the internal traffic that comes out of Stonegate, which is really a way for them to get out and have a road that gets from there out for their folks. So I would be very concerned about opening up to Foley at this point in time. But I think if I understand your questions, and you got to tell me if we did or not, but it seems to me like we have addressed those the best we can, given the situation, given that we really need to consider this for the Stonegate folks. But we don't do anything that hurts you, not Stonegate, but for the Rayleigh Farms folks, but protecting Stonegate in the process. That's our balance here that we're trying to do, and I hope we're achieving that in some acceptable fashion.
Actually, when we built there, we figured that we would have a big buffer, and there would be a house backyard, not a road, that would be acting as a buffer and, of course, facing the west side of Rayleigh Farms. And I don't know what Mr. Rayleigh intended, but thank goodness he could have taken this tree row down when he built Stonegate. And I think he sees the value of those trees that are already there and everything else. But I want to let someone else address the road, but I certainly feel some better. It's still going to have a big impact on those of us that sit in our backyards, of course. And, but I do, I thank the council and appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi there.
Aye.
I'm Ms. Janine's bodyguard and driver.
[laughing]
And I was also president of Stonegate Property Owners Association for six of the last eight years. When this was originally proposed, they talked about giving us a buffer. And the latest proposal we got was putting a fence right down the property line. One of the comments that somebody that works with Rayleigh Farms Development made it to one of our property owners who's here tonight was that when they got this approved, they're going to put a bulldozer blade right on the property line and clear everything out down there. Well, that just really destroys a lot of the value we have in having a buffer. A buffer is something that's going to buffer all that sound, noise, and pollution from that neighborhood coming over into ours. So the idea that you've spoken about tonight of putting a fence over by the road and leaving all that natural vegetation as a buffer in there is exactly what you should do, because that will give us the buffer to not have people living right in our backyards and not have all that sound and noise coming from over there. Just leave all the natural vegetation, put fence on the far side of it, and you've left us an actual buffer. But to just put a fence up behind us, tear all the vegetation down, and then start planting stuff, it hasn't given us a buffer. In ten years, there might be enough plants over there to reduce the sound some, but it's still putting a fence right in our backyard. We didn't want a fence. We don't have a fence. So we'd like you to put the fence all the way over by the road as reasonably close as you can and leave all the natural vegetation. That would be our preferred outcome of this. We can't tell you where to put a road or not to put a road. I understand what you're dealing with. But please put that fence as far away from us as you can and leave us our natural vegetation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Hi, I'm Susan. I was here at the last meeting. I'm probably the one that stirred up this hornet's nest about the fence. And the purpose of the fence is really because it's a gated property. We appreciate your consideration and having it a solid fence for the, reduce the sound barrier or have a sound barrier, a solid fence, not just a, you know, I guess like where they have gaps in it.
Be a board-on-board fence.
Board-on-board fence.
Not picket fence.
And thank you so much for your consideration with that forty-foot, leaving the vegetation the way it is.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Excuse me, sir, we got a lady coming from the back.
I agree with the new changes, but where I am in Stonegate, I don't have a lot of trees. It's a lot of vines and stuff. I was just wondering if that was going to be supplemented through there to be even all the way down?
Yes. We can't replace what has grown up naturally over the years, but we have a landscaping plan for the areas that do not have vegetation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, sir. You're up now.
Yeah, hi. I live on that west side with Greg Coker and the rest of my neighbors here. And I agree with what Greg said. Yeah, we like leaving the natural vegetation there and moving that fence as close to the road as you possibly can, vice putting it what we originally had heard, closer to our property line. So I think that's a wonderful idea. I think that'll satisfy most of our concerns here tonight by doing that. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was our goal when we came in here. And we actually got involved in this when we understood the bulldozer on the property line. And Lee, being our planner, and Andy, they've looked at it and said, that is going to be a real disruption to the folks on either side. And we got, that's the reason we're building, one of the reasons we're building the road, is so that we can put the road and the vegetation where it needs to go. Rayleigh's not building this road. The city of Gulf Shores is. So that way, we have control to do the best thing we can for Rayleigh Farms while protecting Stonegate. And so we're on your side, I guess, is my point I'm trying to make. Is there anyone else with any comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Marcia Velo, and I also live in Stonegate. My property backs up to the Rayleigh subdivision. I have a clarification about, you spoke about the road stopping at the Star as depicted in the diagram, although it shows the road in green going farther north, all the way to the north end of the Rayleigh subdivision. So are you saying now...
We're only building to the Star.
To the Star.
We've asked them to give us the right-of-way if there were ever a desire and a reason to connect to Foley. We've got the right-of-way, and so that, the red just indicated the right-of-way that we have.
Okay, so that's like halfway.
But we're building to the Star. We're building to the Star.
All right. At what phase would the fence actually be built?
Mark?
We would build the fence, the roadway, and any supplemental landscaping needed to fill in some gaps. We'd do it all at one time. It'd be one project. It would all be done at once. It wouldn't be something that'd be phased in. When we built the road, all of it would go in at the same time.
But Lee didn't. When there's some timing related to the Rayleigh subdivision, when they started something, of when it would be built?
Yeah, their estimate is they'll be finished with the infrastructure for Phase Three in eighteen, twenty-four months, a couple of years.
Couple of years before that will be built.
So the fence will go in when the road is built?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. I have some additional questions about the fence itself. One of my neighbors touched on it briefly. Any fence that has gaps in it, including at the ground or the shadow box fence that they are building on Coastal Gateway Boulevard, that's not an adequate fence for sound barrier. The fence needs to be a solid board and batten fence to the ground. Any gaps in that fence would allow sound to come through it, just like water would go through a hole, sound will come through a gap in a fence. So I'm asking that it be a solid eight-foot fence, board and batten, no gaps in it, not even budded together. You have a board in the front of it so that you cannot see through it. If you can see through it, you will get sound through it.
When we have built those type of fences before, with the wind gusts that we get here, they do not stand up. They blow down. And so it's going to be very difficult, in my opinion, Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but building solid fences like that that allow no air to get through it lasts very short periods of time. And now you've got fence blown over on top of vegetation, especially a tall one. So I think that is improbable to happen, just to be honest with you.
So that's not going to do much for our sound barrier. The buffer that y'all are leaving now, since the fence is going to be built on the road itself, in the existing vegetation that is there, are you saying you will supplement with additional vegetation where there is a lack? Because I don't have a tree behind me. I have nothing but vines and scrubs, and it's mostly empty.
Lee, does your diagram show some of that?
Yeah, sir. I mentioned that that was, so the way that the buffer requirements work in any situation is you have to meet those minimum requirements. If they're there today, then you don't have to meet them. If those, the native plants there today do not meet those minimum, they'd have to be planted. So the minimum requirements that we're proposing would be based on that buffer requirement for them. Don't have anything there, trees and stuff.
Okay. Because I don't, I'm not lucky like some of my neighbors. I don't have really anything behind there. A lot of it is just empty where it's been bulldozed before. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the effort you're going through to appease.
Thanks for your comments.
Mark, what will the fence look like? How...
We haven't determined, we haven't turned, the shadow box fence she's referring to was specifically requested by that HOA. So the reason that fence was built the way it was is because that's what the subdivision asked for. So, you know, we hadn't, we haven't got into that level of detail by no means. So once we get into the design phase, we can look at that and get their input on the final form of that fence and get their input like we did on those subdivisions.
Okay.
Is there anyone else from the community that has any comments as part of this public hearing?
Would you consider a stone fencing? Just something to think about.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
So we'll end up the public hearing part. If there's no one else, then is there, we can move forward, guys, and is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend rules of procedure that we may consider this ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules to consider ordinance two thousand and three. Wanda?
Mr. Garris.
Aye.
Mr. Sinak.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Craft.
Aye. Mark, before we begin to vote on this, and Lee, is there, anything we've discussed tonight, does this language in this ordinance need to be adjusted based on anything we talked about tonight?
As I mentioned, the details of that buffer, the fencing, everything, they're not part of this ordinance. It's just the dedication of the right-of-way. So all those details can be worked out over the next eighteen, twenty-four months before we actually construct all of this. There's nothing in the ordinance that would be impacted.
Thank you. Rules are suspended. We're now free to consider ordinance two thousand and three as presented.
Remove for the approval of adoption of ordinance two thousand and three as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance two thousand and three as presented. Wanda?
Mr. Garris.
Aye.
Mr. Sinak.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Craft.
Aye. Ordinance two thousand and three is approved, and we thank you so much for your comments and constructive input to us to get this done. We have one more ordinance to consider. It's ordinance two thousand and four. This is an ordinance that, Andy, what is your specific purpose for? Is Gulf Shores fire and rescue? No, it's not. Zoning text amendment for the mobile food unit.
We'll try to be brief.
I will be brief. Thank you. As Travis pointed out, this has been going on over a year. So this is, again, an amendment to the zoning ordinance to place the mobile food unit regulations that we use for the pilot program into the zoning ordinance and make them a permanent regulations and a permit use. Heard this back in December at your last meeting of 2020. There were questions about location questions and debate and discussions. We took a, we took a chance and made a, really one modification. And what we modified is previously, the mobile food units will be allowed in any non-residential zoning districts or non-residential areas of planned unit developments. We modified that to make mobile food units in the BA and BG zoned areas, which have a map showing those areas in red on the screen, for BG and BA zoned properties fronting on fifty-nine, mobile food unit uses will only be allowed by a conditional use permit. So what that allows is a conditional use permit requires a public hearing before the planning commission and city council. They'll give the city greater control over the location of food units as they're approved in the city of Gulf Shores. Also, that change does not cap the amount of permit applications we'll allow for food trucks, but I think it addresses the questions and concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. And with that, staff recommends approval of this zoning text amendment. Be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Andy? This is a public hearing again. Is there anyone here to speak related to this ordinance?
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Wanda. Thanks to Gulf Shores community that reached out in support of this initiative. In my travels, I learned that food trucks, in France, they call them roulette. So in the spirit of brevity and the spirit of the season, les délais, roulette, roulette.
Thank you.
Whatever you say.
Move that we suspend rules of procedure that we may consider this ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Wanda?
Mr. Garris.
Aye.
Mr. Sinak.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Craft.
Aye. The rules were suspended. We're free to consider ordinance two thousand and four.
Move for the adoption of ordinance two thousand and four, waiver's reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Wanda?
Mr. Garris.
Aye.
Mr. Sinak.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Craft.
Aye. Ordinance two thousand and four is approved. Ryan, congratulations. You worked your way through it. The next item on the agenda is a resolution accepting certain streets and certain subdivisions known as Craft Farms North, Phase Five and Six, as shown on recorded passes of the subdivision. Mark?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we're recommending acceptance of Craft Farms North, Phase Five and Phase Six. This subdivision is located on the northern portion of Craft Farms, kind of northeast part of Craft Farms North, including, I'll give you a little background. Phase Five was completed in 2017 in... including, uh, I'll give you a little background. Uh, Phase Five was completed in 2017, and Phase Six was completed in 2018. So both, uh, both of these phases have gone through their twenty-four-month minimum waiting period, as well as have well over fifty percent, really, they're at a hundred percent, uh, build out. Uh, they did post a maintenance surety with the city for those two years to make sure that if anything had happened to the roadways in that time, we'd have the monies to, uh, repair them. Uh, we, we re-inspected all the roads and the ridesaway. All the sidewalks are completed. All of our punchless items have been corrected. So what we're recommending tonight is acceptance of portions of Alton Street, Inverness Circle, Craig and Loop, and Ross Drive. And this, uh, on the left is Phase Five. These are the streets in, uh, in particular that are in Phase Five. And then on the right-hand side are Phase Six streets that are being discussed tonight. And we have accepted all the other remaining streets in Craft Farms North. So, um, all the ongoing maintenance costs will be absorbed into the, uh, annual operating budget for the Streets Division of Public Works. And with that, staff recommends we accept streets in Phase Five and Phase Six for maintenance.
Thank you, Mark.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, is there, is, in spirit of this is a, our town, our, our work session meeting, is there anyone with any comments on this before we take action?
Just a quick question. Um, the partial streets, that's because the other portion of the street has already been accepted into the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is the remaining, there'll be no more streets in Craft Farms North that aren't included in city maintenance.
No, other than the, the villages, which is completely separate from their HOA.
Okay.
So, yes.
Fine, thank you.
It's Resolution sixty-three seventy.
Move for the adoption of Resolution sixty-three seventy and wave its reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution sixty-three seventy. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-three seventy is approved. Next, we have Resolution sixty-three seventy-one. This is a resolution appointing John Turberville and Grant Brown to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Wanda, anything different?
Yes, sir. Uh, the only thing is, they, they will, um, if this resolution passes, they will serve a full term of three years, which will end on January seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Wanda. That's Resolution sixty-three seventy-one.
Motion to adopt Resolution sixty-three seventy-one.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt this resolution as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-three seventy-one is approved. Next is sixty-three seventy-two. Grant, this is a resolution accepting the bid of Adware and Specialty of Texas for youth athletic sports uniforms.
Yes, sir. Because our athletic programs spend more than fifteen thousand dollars annually, we bid these purchases out. We solicited bids and received a number of, of bids, and the lowest conforming bid was from Adware and Specialty out of Texas. So we're recommending, uh, award of this bid in a one-year option with two additional one-year options. So as many as three years if this works well for both, uh, the company and for our city.
Thank you, Grant. It's Resolution sixty-three seventy-two.
Move for the adoption of Resolution sixty-three seventy-two and wave its reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution as presented. Any discussion or comment?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-three seventy-two is approved. Next, we have, uh, Resolution sixty-three seventy-three. Steve, I think you've got the next two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Back in two thousand nineteen, uh, the city council, uh, authorized us to, uh, contract with Matrix, uh, consulting company that did a complete space and office needs and facility study for the city. Uh, how they do that is they work with each of the departments. They look back, uh, twenty years as how the growth has, uh, occurred, and then they projected a similar type of growth for the next, uh, twenty years. And in that, uh, study, they've, uh, concluded that, uh, overall, our city facilities are, are well-maintained and range from excellent, uh, to, uh, fair, but, uh, had identified, uh, some, uh, some public safety needs that needs to be worked on over the next, uh, five years. Particularly, uh, the police headquarters, uh, building has both operational and facility condition issues. In fact, the jail space is about ten, uh, beds short today, and that'll be project, that's projected to be twenty-four beds short over the next, uh, twenty years. Uh, the municipal court, uh, the way it's located in two thousand, the two thousand and three building, uh, it's kind of crowded behind the, uh, the, the podium and, uh, and in the back area, and it, uh, doesn't provide the space needed for the, uh, magistrates, the, uh, prosecutor and, and the attorneys, and, uh, that needs to be worked on. And there is some concern, uh, security issues associated with the jail where it is now, as well as bringing the prisoners back and forth, uh, to the court facility. And then, uh, the, uh, right now, uh, the fire department is, uh, joint-using, uh, the Oyster Bay Fire Station's, uh, or Huggers Landing, uh, Fire Training Tower Facility. So there's an immediate need for training, uh, facility. And as you've seen, matter of fact, uh, tonight, there's a lot of growth in the northeast quadrant of the city, and over the, by the year twenty, uh, twenty-five, it's projected that we're going to need another, uh, fire station. So all that said, and that need being demonstrated and, and presented to you at a work session a while back, it's my recommendation that we hire the, uh, Volker Project Management Team to help us, uh, truth these, the numbers that are associated with, uh, these programs. Work with the police and the fire and rescue staff to, to basically, uh, identify the exact square footage that's needed. Also, there's the need to actually do some site, uh, selection and identification of where these facilities, uh, need to go there and bring that back to you, the good, bad, and ugly associated with each of the sites that we identified. Uh, we also need to work on facilitating, uh, a, and defining the current and projected space requirements for each of the police and, uh, fire needs. And so, uh, with that said, I, it's my recommendation to hire, uh, Volker, uh, Project Management Team for an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Work on this. I know, uh, police and fire and, and public safety in general is a high, high priority of the council. So, uh, unfortunately, when, for example, I was here when we built and expanded the police facility where it is now, well, we had a population of just over three thousand people then. Now, we have almost thirteen thousand people and increasing tourism. So we really need to take a look at that. So, Mr. Mayor, Council, I would strongly recommend that we bring, uh, Volker on to continue to work with the police chief and the fire chief and the, uh, you all to basically identify the best sites and the best, uh, facility arrangements needed for all this and look at a new, uh, justice center that would incorporate, uh, both the police headquarters, the jail space, and the municipal court building in one.
Thank you, Steve. It's Resolution sixty-three seventy-three.
Move for the approval of Resolution sixty-three seventy-three as presented. Wave a three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Uh, opportunity for discussion by anybody, including anybody in the audience who have any questions or comments about this. With the growth of this community as we extend north and having, in the middle of, right in this area here, having the major fire and all of our police headquarters right here, our city's growing. And we've got to, we've got to react to that growth and make sure that we do it in the right way to have a professional look at that, to help us with site selections. And I know that our, our police department has been, Chief Delmore is pretty vocal about the inefficiencies related particularly to our jail and to the operations out of in-town here. So this is an important step forward for the city. So we've got a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-three seventy-three, uh, is approved. Steve, you got one more?
Uh, yes, sir. Speaking of growth, uh, the school system, uh, and elementary school is, uh, in over capacity, about a little over two hundred students right now. We, uh, the school system wisely, uh, moved the, uh, sixth grade from the elementary school, middle school, when we formed the school system, and that's provided space. But unfortunately, with the, uh, growth citywide, uh, there's a dire need for additional, uh, elementary school space. So we had contracted with Walcott Adams and GMC to provide the design to add six classrooms, traditional classrooms, and two, uh, STEAM labs, uh, to not only accommodate the growth, but basically facilitate an enhanced education experience for our schoolchildren. And, uh, Matt Aiken's going to come up and talk a little bit about that, uh, just after I present. The, so we sought bids. We received three bids. I provided the, the bid sheet, uh, to you in your packet. And it's my recommendation that we, uh, award the, the sixth classroom and two STEAM lab, uh, addition to the elementary school in an amount not to exceed four million, seventy-nine thousand, dollars, seven hundred and seventy-one, uh, dollars to Radcliff, Ben Radcliff Contractor Incorporated. Additionally, uh, because of the, uh, extra cost and, and still the need to identify the FFNE and, uh, the, uh, technology that needs to, uh, uh, go forward with this, uh, elementary school addition and tie that into the whole, uh, campus, uh, it's my recommendation we amend the contract of Walcott Adams from, uh, three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred to four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars in a cost not to exceed. In your agenda item packet, identified the seventy thousand dollars of mu, in additional monies that we're setting aside, working with the Public Works crews to do a lot of the site work out there. And then, uh, there's an, I already talked about the, uh, furniture fixtures and equipment, as well as, uh, technology for another two hundred thousand. So this would be a, a total enhancement. This will be our third, uh, phase of improvement since, uh, the city council started the, uh, school system. The first phase was about eight hundred, eight point six million dollars, uh, that basically took care and did all the site work and got rid of a lot of the portables and, uh, did a better transportation network of separating the school traffic, I mean, the parent traffic from the, um, bus traffic and did, and provided teacher, poor teachers were parking in the mud and provided parking spots for those. So we've done, done that work, uh, and we did that just before the schools opened in two thousand and nineteen. Currently, uh, the gym, uh, space and the locker rooms had outgrown, uh, the two, uh, nineteen ninety-eight, uh, facility that we inherited. And with girls' sports and boy, additional boys' sports, there was a need to increase that. That was just over five million dollars. So this four point seven, uh, million will be towards, uh, the elementary school and its expansion. So Matt, can, can you help me out a little bit talking about, not just the classroom space, but what a STEAM lab is all about, bringing education to a, another and higher level?
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Mayor and, and Council for allowing me to speak. So I'm just, I'll, I will be, be brief, but I, I want to talk to you about the instructional point of view, and Steve mentioned some of that, um, as he, as he was speaking. We, um, a lot has gone on in the last couple of years, and, um, you know, our focus is certainly most on, on academics, number one, and, and, but, but also not doing things the same way that they've always been done. So I want to talk to you about, it's not only an addition, as, as Steve mentioned, to, to handle the additional students that we have, um, but it's also really, um, changing our focus and, and supporting our teachers in instruction. So we're, um, really trying to introduce a twenty-first century learning environment. It's about time in twenty-twenty-one, right? And also create flexible collaborative STEAM or STEM, uh, learning spaces. So, I'll let this catch up. We're taking a new approach to the facilities, and we think that facilities should support learning and encourage innovation. So as we've gone through this Phase Three process, it was more of, more than just plopping rectangles down to handle more students. And so you'll see, again, you've seen these pictures before, some of them, um, but really to encourage innovation and to set the expectation for next year and the years to, to come of what teaching and learning should look like in Gulf Shores. And we feel like it should be different than what, what we've come to know, uh, our students have known, our teachers have known in the past before we started a new school system. And I will remind you of some of our core values, that we want to promote a rigorous, comprehensive, and relevant curriculum while we incorporate the students' physical, mental, emotional, and social well-being into the teaching and learning environment. And finally, we want to instill a sense of pride in our community and our schools. So I just want to show you a few quick pictures to, to give you an example, show you an example of what we're looking at. And again, some of you have seen, most of you have seen these, but I'm not sure if the public has seen them all. So this is going into the classroom addition, um, as, as you enter and look to the north. Those, that's actually steps or it's a learning area. So we really tried to make collaborative learning spaces throughout the building. The second picture shows, those are classrooms on the right. You'll notice the garage doors and the learning nooks. So we really want kids, if, if you watch the news or you look at tech companies, um, the way people work has really changed. And so we want our students to be used to going to school and, and learning those, those skills that will be necessary to be successful. Again, we want our classrooms, so we say these, we want them to be model classrooms. As we go through, as you know, we're going through this master planning process. And so we want to set the tone in this addition for what classrooms should look like in the rest of the elementary school, the middle school. So it's, it's about a sixth classroom addition, but it's a much bigger picture to show what our expectations are for classrooms in the future. And then finally, I'll show you the outside. Um, as you, this is the, the learning area that's, that's outdoors, and you'll notice to the, to the left, it opens into those STEAM labs. So I don't, I didn't bring pictures of the entire STEAM labs. But again, you'll notice we're working on teaching our students about the environment and taking care of the environment in which we live, but also hands-on learning and, and making, making learning fun and innovative. So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Tell us the meaning of STEAM. I know it's an acronym.
Yes, so, so you're all familiar with STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And, and STEAM, that A is just adding, adds in the arts. Um, so it's, it's just a combination of, of, it's kind of the latest buzzword in education, if you will.
I've heard you say that, but I didn't know that the public listening did. So, uh, that's good. Any, any questions or comments? Anybody in the audience, any questions about this, or any, any comments you'd like to make?
So, Mr. Mayor, I have two resolutions. One is to amend the architectural contract. One is to award the bid. If the council approves those, uh, it's our anticipation, our goal, uh, to have this, uh, construction completed by the end of this calendar year. And I've asked, uh, Noel Hand to be the city's project manager on this.
Him and the Can Do Crew.
And I just want to thank, thank all of you, each of you, for, for your support. We wouldn't, it wasn't for, for Steve and his always saying, Matt, you know, what, not necessarily I can have everything that I ask for, but, but your support from the city's perspective obviously makes all this possible. We appreciate it.
Matt, thank you. Okay, Steve, tell us, uh, uh, Resolution sixty-three seventy-four. That's the next thing we vote on. We want to separate these twos out. This is for Goodwill's Kaywood for additional design services, an amount not to exceed one hundred and six thousand.
Wanda, my numbers are backwards from that. I got sixty-three seventy-three. Oh, I'm sorry. That's why we just did for the Justice Center. You're right, Mr. Mayor. Sixty-three seventy-four is the amendment of the, uh, Mac Walcott, uh, and Goodwin Mills Cahill, uh, contract for an amount not to exceed four hundred and twenty thousand, uh, five hundred and seventeen dollars. not to exceed $420,517.68.
I don't have that. My resolution says it's $106,981.
That, we're amending the 313 that the council had already approved up to that 1/6, so the total amount is 420.
All right, so we're amending the design surface in an amount not to exceed $106,981.
Yeah.
That's what this resolution says.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I confused you.
You kind of lost me there. So that's Resolution 6374.
Move for the approval of Resolution 6374.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution as submitted. Any discussion? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? 6374 is approved. The next item is 6375, and this is to accept the bid of Ben Radcliffe Contractor for the Gulf Shores Elementary School Expansion Project, an amount not to exceed $4,079,771.
That's correct.
And that is correct, Steve?
Yes.
So that's Resolution 6375.
Move for the approval of Resolution 6375 and waive its reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution as submitted. Any discussion? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 6375 is approved. Thank you, Steve. Next, we have two annexations, ordinances to consider. Andy, I'll let you take both of them.
Yes, sir. We've received applications from Mr. and Ms. Michael Moncrief to annex their Lot Nine of Granite Cove subdivision into the city. And we also received another application from Mr. and Ms. Sergey Maruda to annex Lot 11 of Granite Cove subdivision into the city. Both these properties are currently developed with single-family houses, and upon annexation, they'll be zoned R1-4, single-family residential. They are located, Granite Cove subdivision is located off of County Road 8 West, and the properties are located on the right-hand side of the map on your screen. They do comply with all annexation criteria. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Ordinance number 2005 is from Mr. and Mrs. Michael Moncrief.
Move that we suspend rules of procedure that we may consider this ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Wanda?
Mr. Sinak.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Craft.
Aye.
The rules are suspended. We're free to consider ordinance 2005.
Move for the adoption of ordinance 2005 and waive its reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2005. Wanda?
Mr. Sinak.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Craft.
Aye.
The rules are suspended. We're free to consider ordinance 2006.
Move for the adoption. Go ahead.
Of ordinance 2006 and waive its reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Wanda?
Mr. Sinak.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Craft.
Aye.
The rules are suspended. We're free to consider ordinance 2006.
Move for the adoption. Go ahead.
Of ordinance 2006 and waive its reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2006. Wanda?
Mr. Sinak.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Craft.
Aye.
Ordinance 2006 is adopted. Andy, thank you. That concludes all of our new business for tonight. Are there any committee reports?
Shortly, Mr. Mayor, regarding, I promised a report about our E-Cycle Shred Day that was held January 9th, very successful. I anticipated we would have less than before, but we actually collected almost 12,000 pounds of scrap metal computers and electronics and 9,000 pounds of shreds. So we were right on board with about what we've always done. In spite of thinking that we might lose popularity or that electronics were running out of being recycled, it continues to hold steady. The efficiency of the new operation just made it a lot, seemed a lot easier on everyone that volunteered, but those levels are still up there. So look at that, diverting about five tons of what possibly could have gone to the landfill, we're diverted from being done so and disposed of in a profitable manner, or in a proper manner. And I want to thank the city of Gulf Shores and Orange Beach for their participation financially to make this something that doesn't cost the residents anything to participate in. It's a big deal as it's concerned that we are about our environment. As much as we preach about protecting the environment, this is one of the best things that we do to actually give our residents an opportunity to do the right thing at no cost to them. So thank you for that.
Steve, thank you. Appreciate your leadership on that. Any, no other meetings from committee reports? Then I know that we have one staff report tonight. Grant, you got something to share with us?
So last October, the mayor and council extended a membership with Air Medicare, which provides corporate limit city Gulf Shores residents with transportation through their Air Medicare network, both ground transport and air transport. And last week, residents living within our corporate limit should have received a piece of mail that we sent out. We sent out just over 5,700 letters to all of our corporate limit residents. And the response from that letter being sent to our residents, according to Air Medicare, has been phenomenal. Number of residents are actually speaking with Air Medicare about changing or improving or expanding the membership with some different levels that Air Medicare offers. But the good news is our residents should have good comfort and feel confident that with that membership that they all have, that if the need come arise for them to be transported, that there's some support for them. So thank you all for that, and I want to make sure that the residents knew what that letter was about.
And thank you for you and fire and rescue for getting that mailer out into people's hands that weren't always as aware as they were last year.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Is there anybody that did not get on the agenda that has anything they'd like to speak to the council about? Thank you. It was a long meeting, productive, and we got a lot done and a lot of important things considered. So is there a motion? We adjourn?
We adjourn.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.